Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, February 12th, 2020. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes it has.
Please call the roll.
Carolyn?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Harazog?
Here.
Olstead?
Here.
Heschel?
Solaji?
Here.
We have a call. Wonderful. Tonight, we are privileged to have two students from Merrill Middle School, both eighth graders, Evan Brandl and Alicia Tlatalpa, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll invite them to come forward and get us started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are so glad that Evan and Alicia were able to join us here tonight because we always like to have students at our guard meetings. And we haven't had my representation lately from the middle school, so it's a pleasure to have you to take time out of your evening schedules and bring parents along to join us tonight. So we thank your parents for being here and we thank you for being here as well. We have the signed certificate as a tangible remembrance of your being here and leading us in the pledge. So thank you, Alicia, and thank you, Evan. Thank you very much, enjoy your evenings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but if you have other activities tonight, we certainly understand. All right, we will move on to board and administrative reports, starting with the board president report. I can tell you that it's been a busy, busy time since we last met. As a result of my serving on this board, I was nominated by both our board vice president and our superintendent to serve on the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, Board of Directors. And I was elected last fall to the position of second vice president. And the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, which represents all 420-plus school boards in the state of Wisconsin, sends a contingent to Washington DC every year to interact with our lawmakers and make them aware of things that we need on a local level. So it was truly an honor to represent you, as well as this part of the state in Washington. We had an opportunity to interact with several of our lawmakers, including Representative Glenn Growthman, along with Senator Tammy Baldwin and Senator Ron Johnson. The two things we were asking for was increased funding for special education, increased reimbursement to try to get closer to the 40% level of reimbursement that Congress had indicated that they were willing to go to some years ago, whereas right now that reimbursement is around 14%. The other area that we talked about was increasing the number of young people choosing education as a profession. We know that in this state, in the 2018-19 school year, there were approximately 2,000 teachers for which they had to apply for special licenses because they did not have the appropriate license to teach in the area where they were assigned. The projection is by 2025, this country will be short 100,000 teachers. And so it's really important that we grow our own, that we encourage young people, such as our two student representatives and the others they represent, to consider education as a career, and that we have quality teachers moving forward in all of our schools. I also attended the several events at West High last week. That was, that was so awesome because it started with a soup supper in the, in the O Room, which was quite fun. The culinary arts kids were very involved with that, and I believe some of those students will have a career in marketing because they were very good at convincing me to try the various soups that they, they had that night. But there was also entertainment with that. I was involved in some entertainment by a musician, as well as someone doing a dramatic presentation. That then led to watching both the North and West Boys and Girls Varsity Basketball Games, and that was enhanced by, by the dance teams of both schools, which were really outstanding, and the West High twirl team. So it was quite an evening of athletics and food and the arts entertainment. I just want to also put in a plug for tomorrow night at North High School. They will be sponsoring their fifth annual spaghetti dinner with Mid-Morning Kiwanis Club. And I'm sure our students are going to be talking about that, so I don't want to take away their thunder, but I would encourage any and all of you to, to participate in that event. It's a fundraiser for an international organization that helps children who have been injured in war. And last Friday, I was in Madison for the Professional Standards Council. Again, as a result of serving on this board, I was nominated to serve on a committee with the Department of Public Instruction to advise the state superintendent on issues related to teacher licensing. We talked about a variety of topics there, including, again, how do we recruit more people into the profession and how do we retain them? We're losing far too many teachers after year two, year five, year 10, who are choosing to go into other professions. And one of the things we talked about was improving working conditions for the, the teachers. And we also talked about the EDTPA, which is an assessment, which currently all pre-service teachers, that is, teachers or students in college have to submit to. And there's some talk about changing that because the research does not support a good score on the EDTPA and the education or the teacher effectiveness programs that our teachers experience once they're hired. So those were just some of the things that I've been involved in, and I appreciate your support on that. I wanted to bring back something for each of you from my, my trip to Washington DC. And I, I tried to tie a couple of things together. Our, our board policies address the fact that we are a continuous improvement district, which means that sometimes we don't always get things right the first time, but we have to adjust or correct them. Plus, many of you serve as chairs of committees and you have to call committees to order. So I found these. So I found these.
That is so awesome.
Mini gavels, pencils with dual erasers.
I guess we get two.
For those of you who make mistakes. Thank you, Barb. Future Speaker of the House.
The colors.
Because of the colors, I needed to get you two. So now you have your own individual gavel or your own individual means of correcting mistakes and continuing our efforts in the continuous improvement realm. So with that, I will turn things over to Dr. Cartwright.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Harazog. So tonight, we're going to go ahead and we have our two student representatives available on here, present with us tonight. We're so glad to have both of you back, welcome. And we're going to start right away with Oshkosh West High School with Amelia.
Okay, so February has been a pretty busy month for Oshkosh West. I'm going to start off with athletics as always. The bowling team won conference. They're the conference champions, so that's very exciting. And we have quite a large bowling team, and it's very big in our school. And the boys wrestling finished fifth at the conference, with Alec Hunter getting first. And he claimed his second FVA title. And then eight other West students finished in the top 10. Boys basketball won against North at the, in the doubleheader. It was a very exciting game, and they won 63 to 55. Girls basketball had their senior night last night, and that was very widely advertised since there was lots of events happening there, and it was the last game for many of our girls on the team. The Ice Hawks had a game on Thursday, February 6th, and they won against Shano team, and their score was seven to three, so they were getting up there. Boys swimming had conference this past Saturday, and they placed fourth as a team. And Sam Blaskowski, he's a junior at West, he placed second in the 50 free. And that's very impressive since there is a lot of very good boys. Gymnastics got sixth place at the Whitefish Bay Bradley Invite this past Saturday, and they're continuing to have competitions throughout this month. I just want to give a thanks to fans teams since they are very, they get the student body going, and we had a lot of students at the game last Friday. And that was all because of them and their, their advertising on social media. Very exciting time for many of the senior, senior athletes, as this past week, Christian Sheek signed his letter of intent to play baseball at Upper Iowa, and Colin Jones also signed to play football at Upper Iowa. Dance team went to state this past month, so they, they got third at sectionals, the competition before state. And so they went to state, and Jessa Neemeth was an individual who actually got D1 All-State for the first time in West dance history. She's going to be the only dancer that has had that, and they're wanting to continue that tradition to have more dancers next year. And they did very well. Again, Mag Child went to state, so lots of people going to state. And in these next few weeks, they're going to continue trying to improve their performance before the big competition. For music, there was a band concert on February 6th, and it was all of the bands, so half the music department was there. And musical, the musical sister act happened from January 23rd to the 26th. And actually, there was a lot of school shows that happened before that too during the week. And you could tell many of the kids really enjoyed it, especially when the two main characters kissed. They went wild over that. And in the choir department, contemporary a cappella groups are currently being created. And this is different from the past since there has only been vocal jazz groups. Last week, we had Snow Blast, and this is a week of fun where the fans group, they put together these, a competition between all grade levels where you make a team of 10 people, and you compete for points in doing silly activities, and then whoever wins gets t-shirts and gets the title of winning Snow Blast. So Monday, we had the waistline challenge, the height challenge, and the basketball challenge. Tuesday, we had the log saw, snow bowling, and log toss. Wednesday, we had tug of war and pyramid build. Thursday, we had gang sport and boardwalk. And Friday, we had make your own sled and sled down Garbage Hill, which is very exciting. Here's some more pictures. People get very competitive, and a group of seniors actually won this year. Another event that happened was superbably won. So it was an event trying to get, showcase all of West's talents, and it was actually before the doubleheader basketball game. So we served soup and grilled cheese, and we showed the artwork, and actually had people play music and perform. So we wanted to get the community into, involved, and it turned out pretty well, and we want to increase the number of people next year as they want to have this event annually. Student government hosted a blood drive on January 31st, and this was a pretty big blood drive since we had 115 blood donors. We collected 72 good units of blood, which is also a pretty large number since a lot of students are, have, are in sports right now and they can't donate blood. So that was a pretty impressive number of blood donate, donors for that, for what is happening right now. And we're having another blood drive on April 7th. So we hope you have a great month, and we'll see you next time. Thank you.
What a wonderful report, and we're so proud again to have you here and to provide us with all of that wonderful information. And now we're going to transition over to Oshkosh North High School with a call.
All right, so there's a lot that's been happening, and there's more to come in February, but there's only so much that I could share when stuff hasn't happened yet. So for February so far and for the past events, we had a Super Bowl just a couple Fridays ago, and we raised over $900, and that goes towards the Ann Davy Fund at North. And if you guys don't know what that is or aren't familiar, it basically is an organization that helps purchase items for those students at North that aren't able to purchase them for themselves. And that could be like bus passes, like backpacks, duffel bags, and things like that. But it was very successful since this was the first time we did a soup competition because the past years it's been chilly. So we were pretty proud of what happened. And then just recently, we had our Valentine's Dance for our students with special needs, and students from middle school, from middle schools and high schools participated in this, and it was a really great outcome as usual. And for sports, our dance team got 10th place at state with their hip-hop routine, and that's the best that our dance team has ever done in school history, so that's super awesome. For boys swim, they got third at the FVA meet, and they will be competing in sectionals soon. Wrestling got seventh place in the FVA conference, and they have regionals this Saturday. Basketball is going well for both boys and girls. Girls are still looking for their first win of the season, but they are also looking forward to the last couple of games. Hockey is also doing pretty well, and they are starting regional play on the 18th, which is just next week. And bowling for boys are going to state, they did pretty awesome, and they are doing really well, so we are really proud about this year. And Dr. Harazog mentioned about the spaghetti dinner a little bit, but the Communities One students are partnering with Mid-Morning Kiwanis and Anara this year to spaghetti dinner to help fund for Anara to support those students who have been affected by war, whether that be that they're refugees or they have injuries. But please come and support, it's tomorrow, 5 to 7. It's for a good cause, and even if you don't want to save the food, I mean, just buying a ticket would help them as well. And last but not least, I mentioned this at the last time I was here, but Les Mis is going to be performing this week, so if you guys do go to the spaghetti dinner, you can go to the, to the school right after. The tickets are like, I think, sold out for Saturday, so if you still want to look for tickets, good luck. But it's going to be really good this year. And that is all so far for this month. See you guys later in March.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Another excellent example of our students providing information for all of us, and does such a remarkable job representing your school. Thank you both so much.
Dr. Cartwright, the superintendent's good news report and the call.
So over at South Park Middle School, recently held their first semester Panther Pride Night, providing the opportunity to show off student work and involve families in fun activities. Additionally, 50 students in the school's art department recently traveled to the John Michael Kohler Art Center. Students and staff participated in a make and take workshop and toured the current exhibits on display. Oshkosh Early Learning 4K classrooms at Davis Childcare Center recently received a visit from the communities at Oshkosh North students. The high school students engaged in learning with their 4K friends. This ongoing partnership provides a leadership opportunity for the high school students and a role model buddy for our district's youngest learners. Community Two students at Oshkosh North recently hosted the Ann Davy Super Bowl, just as we heard about just a moment ago. Nearly 100 staff members attended and raised nearly $1,000 for the Ann Davy Fund, which benefits students in need at Oshkosh North. The Oshkosh West Athletic Department recently recognized the 2019 Athletic Wall of Fame Award winners. The purpose of the award is to recognize and honor outstanding achievements by individuals in athletics who contributed to the promotion and growth of athletics at Oshkosh High School or Oshkosh West High School. Congratulations to this year's award recipients. Three Carl Trager Middle School students recently placed in the Scripps Regional Spelling B at Horace Mann High School in North Fond du Lac. Additionally, one of the students will be advancing to the state competition in Madison on March 7th. Great job, everyone. Carl Trager Elementary School joined the Global School Play Day movement for a full day of play on February the 6th. Students were engaged in unstructured play throughout the day. Each year, schools from around the world stand together to say, "Unstructured play is a vital part of proper child development." Shapiro STEM Academy second graders recently expanded their learning about India by videoconferencing with someone who once lived there. Students learned about the Ganges River in India and how much it is being polluted. In their next engineering project, they will be following the engineering design process to create a water filter to clean polluted water. During these lessons, students will be researching different ways to help stop water, land, and air pollution. Oakwood Elementary School is celebrating with pie. The school is busy getting ready for a visit from the award-winning author, Sarah Weeks. In fact, the entire school is reading her book, Pie, with their family each work, each week. Families are sharing what they think about the book, and students are answering trivia questions about the book and listening to guest readers in the media center to get caught up on their reading. Emmeline Cook, fourth and fifth graders, had a blast at Dr. Eric's Skate Club. Most of the students have participated in a field trip to the skate club at least once a year for the last three years, some many more times than that with their participation in the lighted schoolhouse. Thank you to Dr. Eric for continuing this tradition for our students year after year. As superintendent, I remain committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout our, throughout our community. As you can see on the screen, there's just a few examples of where I've been spending my time. I'll point out, and one of the activities was actually a trip with the American Education Research Association, and this would be in our governance meeting, and I'm very happy and grateful that I was able to get to Florida and actually make it back from Florida, given all the complicating weather factors to that. So, but again, being out in our schools, seeing many of our students in actions and our, our teachers and what they are doing on a day-to-day basis is truly the heart of a lot of my time and my visits, and I'm very gracious for those opportunities. With that, I will turn this back over to Dr. Harazog.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Next, we have district administrator supplemental reports. Do we have any of those this evening?
No, ma'am.
All right. Then we will go on to board committee chair reports. And I know Mrs. Olstead is eager to, well, share.
It's a short one. On Monday, this last Monday, we met for Policy and Governance Committee. We only had one thing on the agenda, and it was Policy 7440, Facility Security. Mr. Jones informed the committee about necessary updates to the policy due to the changes with the door security system starting in mid-March. The new system, Raptor, will require every person visiting the school to swipe their ID prior to entering the building at the main entrance. Students arriving after the school day begins will be required to scan their ID as well. The system is linked to a national database that will do a background check on the visitor and alert the school if there's any issues. The system takes a photo and prints an ID for the visitor if the background check is clean. Staff will be trained on the system in early March. Communication will be sent via media blasts, and the information will be included in school newsletters in advance of the implementation. The decision was made to start this program now versus the beginning of the school year so that added security is in place, so that are all acclimated to the change sooner rather than later, and so that it is not another new item at the beginning of another school year. So this will be coming back to us to vote on this agenda, or vote on this security, facility security policy. And when it does, when we come back, I think at that time when it's finalized, we were going to ask Mr. Jones to come up and then talk about it, just to tell us what it is and explain a little bit more of the system, which is a really, really, really cool system. So we're really excited about it. So that'll be at our next meeting. And then our future meeting will be March 9th at 8:30 AM.
That's it? Thank you very much, Mr. Olstead. Does anyone else have a board committee?
Yes, I do. As promised at our last board meeting, I am going to give the legislative committee meeting notes that met on Tuesday, January 28th. We had a special guest join us, it was Representative and Minority Leader Gordon Hens, and the bulk of the meeting was basically a conversation with him, getting his perspective on what has happened in Madison the last term and what might happen in the future. He said currently, they have the fewest number of days that are being spent on legislation, and the fewest number of bills are being signed. The legislature is scheduled to meet three to four more times, then they will be off until January of 2021. He talked about, if you've been following the news, you found, heard that they found some reserve money at the state level, and they were just trying to decide what to do with it. And Governor Evers has asked for a special legislative session to deal with education uses for that money, but I found out today that they did their gabbling in and gabbling out, so they didn't even discuss anything. We discussed various viewpoints on proposed legislative items, the committee made suggestions on possible changes, for instance, providing a separate line on the tax bill listing the cost of voucher schools to private school, and private schools, allowing for more public awareness. And then, once Gordon left, I gave a very brief legislative update and a report on our State Education Convention that was held in Milwaukee. And our next meeting is going to be on February 25th at 8:30 in the morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans. Does anyone else have a board committee report tonight? All right, seeing none, we move on to the non-agenda-related public forum. There was no one who signed up for that. Next agenda item is the agenda-related public forum. No one signed up for that, so we move on to workshops. Facility Advisory Committee Consolidation Recommendations with Dr. Benlok and others. How does teamwork out here? That's great.
I'm not coming up here alone. This is a culmination of quite a bit of work over the span of probably about six months. It really started six to eight months ago. In fact, it actually started in 2017, but the lion's share of the work was done by the Facility Advisory Committee. Clint Selly from Bray Architects, Jim Fox, and their teams have done a lot to put a lot of information together for us. And really what the focal point of this presentation is, after the board decided to not proceed with the previous April referendum, it was really coming back. The next step was to talk about the consolidation plan. What kept coming up over and over again was the idea of, "Oshkosh really wants a plan." And, and what does it look like at the end? And then we backwards plan to today. And that's, this is the start of that conversation. Starting with the history and the background, and I think I'll turn that over to Clint to talk a little bit about the 2017 analysis study, so.
Thank you, yeah. And again, we, we went through all of the buildings with a number of different lenses, looking at the mechanicals of the buildings, looking at the conditions, so how's the flooring look, the ceiling, all of those types of things. We've, we've looked, touched on historical significance, again, whether that's something we talked a lot about with the committee of, you know, what, what's the community's perception of the building? Every community kind of sees their schools and age and historical significance of the buildings a little bit differently, so we've had a lot of discussions about that. Construction type, I- Construction type, I think that's a, that's a really important one here. Again, some of the older buildings that we have are built really well, but that has challenges when you're, when you're going to go in and fix things, you know, piping and some of the mechanicals are sometimes not very accessible. Sometimes where the load-bearing walls exist makes it challenging. So again, a number of different things that we've looked at through many, many lenses, considering the district and where to go. One more site challenges is another one we have within the district. Some schools like Trager have a lot of land available to them. Others, such as Washington, are on a very, very, very small site, which makes, again, expansion or dealing with some of the challenges difficult. Again, another question or some ideas that we talked about specifically with the committee is, when do you know when to walk away from the building? And again, that's a question that every client deals with in a number of different ways. We talked through this, this was a slide from one of our community presentations. There's kind of a, it's like a 60 to 65% sort of rule of thumb when the cost of renovating and remodeling an existing building approaches about 60 to 65% of the cost of a new building. Sometimes that's a pretty good indicator of maybe when it's time to go away. Again, there's all of those things on the previous one, again, significance and all those things that can swing things one way or the other. This has been something in the industry that has been used to help justify it in some Again, we have updated this to kind of reflect where we sit currently with a number of things. So this was a chart that was provided within the community survey that went out, that kind of distilled everything down. We had a bigger, a little bit bigger document that had a little bit more detail. Again, the student enrollment is per, some information Dave gave me from the, it'd be the third Friday numbers.
Third Friday in January.
So those have been updated. And then our column with the cost to upgrade and improve safety, security, building systems, that was also updated, and I'll kind of speak to that a little bit. At the time of the survey, I believe that number was right around 127 million. Going through the committee process, as we looked at the safety, security portion of that, we were really kind of challenged to find means and methods to, to more cost-effectively look at that. So we went through several different rounds of looking at the plans for the safety, security. Did they all require additions? So you'll notice kind of the change to the 116 there is really because we took a lot of some of the additions that we were originally planning out and tried to be a little bit more cautious with how we were approaching the usage of that. So that kind of speaks to that slide.
So the Facility Advisory Committee, and you've heard this because I've given you the facility updates, and this is really probably more for people watching, but the Facility Advisory Committee used the following criteria. Their task was to propose options renovations and upgrades that support learning environments that are safe, accessible, efficient, and equitable. Purposeful spaces that inspire innovative learning, accommodate evolving technology, promote collaboration among students, staff, parents, and the community. And lastly, a solution that maximizes use, reuse, and/or replacement of existing facilities that is cost-effective for the taxpayer, providing for an enduring end product that is energy-efficient and adaptable for decades to come. And if history is any, you know, guide to us, those decades to come could be 10 decades to come as we use our facilities. This is just a listing of the meetings and what was discussed at each. Obviously, our Facility Advisory website has the video from meetings two through six, as well as all the presentations from meetings one through six and all the associated materials. Everything on here is there, including the executive summary. If you wanted to grab one document and look at everything, this would be that document to look at. What did the Facility Advisory Committee say? So this was a slide from the last presentation. This is sort of the recap. What the Facility Advisory Committee said was commit to long-term consolidation efforts, adopt a long-term pathway, and they would recommend Pathway B, which we're going to go over this evening, and that would move us from 20 facilities down to 14. Pursue a capital referendum, and number four was engage the community further regarding proposed Phase One middle school and elementary school.
Board, if you will check your email very quickly, you will have access to the updated version of this right now, so that way you can follow along with us. So if we can pause just a moment so they can do that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright.
Thank you.
We were looking.
Excellent.
And we're on slide 10.
I'm good.
Yeah.
I was on the draft.
It was like page 16.
The information is just in a different order.
Yeah, it was still all there in the draft.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. We just want to make sure that you can follow along with our presentation.
So when you look at these recommendations, they were broken apart into main recommendations and additional recommendations, and what you'll notice is, there we go, three and four, we've kind of merged together, because given the direction of the board from the last meeting, mind you, the Facility Advisory Committee was still thinking that we were going to bust apart Phase One. So really what we're doing is we're stitching that back together. That's really the effect of that action. The additional recommendations, use key criteria for school site adequacy for our assessments. That seemed to be very logical. Number two, we always do this anyways, but provide taxpayer impact charts for informational materials. And number three, include playground equipment within project scope. I was at Merrill Elementary, Merrill Middle, Webster Elementary, Webster Middle, speaking to each group today, as well as Roosevelt. I talked to a team there. The interesting thing was, when I was speaking with Webster Elementary, and they were talking about the potential idea of getting a new elementary, guess what the first thing they asked was? Does that mean we're going to get a playground? And I said, well, one of the recommendations that I have gone on record and said is my personal favorite, probably, it's also the cheapest one, is include playground equipment within project scope. And I said, I really think that's something that, whose time has come, and that's certainly one of the recommendations.
Absolutely.
So that drew a cheer amongst the crowd, just so, so it's a crowd.
You would think it would be a no-brainer.
Right, like Lakeside when we did the addition.
Yeah.
A lot of districts, I mean, the districts I've worked in, that always seems to be the thing at the end, and it always seemed kind of silly to me that we would go ahead and build a brand-new school, and then you'd wait two to three years for the PTO to get enough money to get a playground in place.
And then the PTO buys whatever they want.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, looking forward to that. So, one of the things we wanted to talk about, and we did change the, this is the order change, was when we talk a little bit about benefits of modern facilities. You know, we've been talking efficiency, three-to-four track, eight-to-10 track. From a staffing perspective, that is a very logical benefit. But there's also a lot of other instructional benefits, there's also some aesthetic benefits, and there's also some learning benefits to having a modern facility in terms of flexibility. So I'll turn that over to Clint, because he has some pictures of what some of these facilities could look like.
Sure. And so, yeah, so tonight, I kind of talked to Dave. I said, there's sort of two different methods. I can maybe show fewer pictures and talk a lot, or sort of a sensory overload and show a whole bunch of pictures. And much like picking your favorite child, I probably went a little overboard. So I'm, while there's a ton of slides here, I'm going to go, try to go extremely quickly through them. I'm glad you guys have the presentation. You can kind of view this at your leisure. Again, learning environments, there's a lot of study, there's a lot of development. I would say schools have changed quite a bit, even within the last five to 10 years. And again, comfort, confidence, creativity. We are, we are building schools as student-centered spaces. We are, we are really thinking about what is best for the students. Dave also kind of said, you know, well, what does a modern facility mean? And I think one of the key words up there is flexibility. I mean, that is so important. And a lot of times when you talk about, you know, modern schools, you talk about, you know, flexibility, and then, and then at some point, somebody says, well, you're talking about an open concept school. And then that makes people nervous, because obviously those had their day, and they had some challenges. But the, you sort of almost start with the principles of that, but you have the ability to, you know, compartmentalize, and you can go from big to small. So that's kind of that, that part there. And then, again, supporting students and educators who benefit from visual cues, ownership, pride, and opportunity for independence and collaboration. And I would say next to the word flexibility, then the word collaboration is kind of the other really important thing of modern learning, that we are giving these kids an opportunity to work in small groups, work in big groups, work independently, and giving them the spaces they need.
The other thing is, he goes through these, what I would, what I would ask you to think about is, think of the modern workspaces that adults are in today. I think you're going to find they look more like this.
I do.
We don't just build a school and then ask the teachers to live and work in it. Architecture doesn't shape how we're teaching. We really need to listen to how you want to teach and then make the architecture respond to that. And again, there has to be an implementation as well, in terms of then when you build it, it has to be used and functioned as intended as well. Again, a lot of different things to think about, evaluation, understanding. We've kind of been in the existing conditions part of this little chart up here, facilities assessment, kind of understanding use. Again, you'll see delivery of curriculum is really important, and I think as, as we set off down this next path, it's really important that not only what is our path, but, you know, what do we want to achieve, and how do we want students to learn and teachers to teach in these buildings? So again, real quickly, these first set of slides will be kind of collaborative learning spaces. I'll just flip through them really quick. If there's, if there's one in particular that you want, want a little more elaboration, I'd be happy to share. Just a real quick story here, hallways have always kind of been where we've sent kids for taking tests and things like that, giving some opportunity that those can be environments where students purposefully can learn. There's access to windows, and they can be seen, and there's furniture to support how they, they learn. Again, another example of a hallway as a learning environment. The openness between the spaces, I think, didn't Oaklawn have some of these types of doors, or am I?
Similar, yes.
Yeah. Furniture is so important. This is a great example of kind of that professional environment and professional look and feel. But that's one thing you're going to see as we go through these slides, is how furniture has really come to support a lot of these spaces. This is an existing school where we just added a skylight to get natural light to rooms that do not have it. It's interesting, because I've toured this school four or five times since it's been completed. Every single time, there's students out in that space utilizing that hallway. Great space.
I think it's really important also to highlight just a little bit that we know that there's a lot of research out there that's related to the ability to have natural lights and students where they are for their mental health as well.
Yep, great point. Yep, it helps reduce tardiness, it helps to the wellness and sicknesses. This is a great example. We created a collaborative space in a new building, so this was a new building, and then when it got time to remodel an existing building, they wanted a similar space. So again, making sure that there's equity between when we are, have the ability to build new versus when we are left in an existing space. Again, I talked a little bit about scale, so this is just a little alcove. Again, some students like a bigger space, some kids like to, you know, curl up with a book in a corner and utilize that space.
That's my favorite.
Yeah, that's my favorite, too.
Absolutely.
This was a classroom that we removed to create, again, within an existing building, to create a collaborative learning environment. This is your neighbor to the south, North Fond du Lac. A great story here is, we went through a whole branding effort. The elementary school is, they kind of refer to it as Lands of Learning, so each grade level is known by a continent versus a grade level. Libraries, again, forever have been the hub of schools, but, you know, again, how we're treating them, how we're utilizing them. The books, while still important, aren't always the most important thing within the libraries, and where we do have books, a lot of times they're on wheels and they're able to be moved around, and the whole look and feel of the space is able to be changed, hopefully at a moment's notice. And again, creating different spaces within the library, too, a little, couple little collaboration areas or nooks. Again, this is a great, great example of the flexibili, oops, what did I do there? Oh, boy.
I'm going to start all over.
I know.
So starting over, today we're going to talk about.
I think we were on the fourth.
Slide 39.
39.
Yep, again, the flexibility, yeah. On the right-hand side is a corridor. This space is kind of a multi-use space. It could, those doors could be open, it could be part of the corridor. The doors could be closed on the right, opened on the left, it's part of the library, or they both are closed, and it's a professional development space. So we just try to create a lot of different spaces to, for kids to utilize. STEM STEAM Fab Labs, again, this is working its way through all levels and all grade levels, elementary example, where that's being, that curriculum's being implemented. Again, visibility, these, the tech ed spaces, STEAM/STEM have traditionally been spaces that have been kind of tucked down a dark hallway. I know when I went to high school, I had no idea what was happening down there. And then you see the cool stuff, and you're like, why wasn't I, why wasn't I in that class?
It was scary down that hallway.
Right. And now we want to put these spaces on display. We want to show kids what's happening in there, the, you know, robotics, the CNC machines, the routers, all of that equipment is interesting, and trying to encourage kids to participate. So these aren't spaces anymore that we want to hide away. This example, that window you see in the back there is actually out to the cafeteria. So this model was set up as, this is the design lab, there's a fabrication lab in the back corner, there's a testing lab back there, and then they come back to the drawing table. So that's all on display from the cafeteria. Again, where some districts are lucky to have wonderful local partners who help finance a project or finance equipment within the project, let's put it on display, let's make this noteworthy, let's make this something that hopefully, again, people are excited about, and the partners have some recognition of their efforts. Nursing is also, and the biomedical fields are becoming an important part and need to be considered in schools. And then this, this actually kind of reminds me of Oaklawn a bit. I didn't include any Oaklawn pictures, hopefully you guys are familiar, but that, you know, just the simple idea of having a green screen and how important that is for, for those types of activities with the flexibility. Finally, community spaces. Again, our schools are not just schools, they're the lifeblood of our neighborhoods and areas and communities, and want to make them either reflect the community. Again, this idea was, we were emulating the town square in East Troy. That's a reused gym floor on the steps there. Again, powerful graphics to, again, convey hopefully the message of the school. Great cafeteria space, again, supporting the public areas as well as the school during the day. Cafeterias don't all look like cafeterias anymore. They almost kind of resemble, you know, college unions, if you will. The furniture is flexible, and it can be used in a number of different ways.
Don't track. So, oh. But can you do that? Like, how would you, oh, yeah, because you have some bleachers.
This is an example, again, this is the Madison area. This is a walking track that is accessible to the community throughout the day, and then on the weekends and nights during big games, they can pull bleachers out and utilize that for seating.
Take one beach.
Hey, I have a question, or actually, Dave, do we have this on, is this going to be on the public?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I just don't think that, I don't think people understand, or even maybe know, what other schools really look like, what other districts, what they really have.
I was just going to say that.
I don't think they have a clue. Like, I think when your kids get in high school, you know, because you travel a lot with your, if your students are in sports or music or things like that, you travel to other school districts, and you see those things. But if you, I mean, these, to look at these pictures, the elementary schools, I've never seen any of the pictures of those. I've seen all the high schools, because I've been to a lot of them, but the elementary stuff, you know, you don't travel to different elementary schools. To see those, it's almost like you're looking at this, and honestly, in my head, I'm like, oh, that'd be really cool. But these are real schools.
Yes.
People really have this.
In Wisconsin.
Like, it's a shut light, yes.
Yeah, this is in Wisconsin, just so you know.
That blows my mind that this is truly what we could, like, this is, this isn't like, oh, we can try to design this, it'll be neat. No, this is realistic, that people have this. There are kids that get this.
So if someone's moving to the state, and they're going to be working in the valley... So if someone's moving to the state and they're going to be working in the valley, what they're going to do is they're going to probably drive by schools, and they may see schools like the pictures you just saw. And that is going to impact their decision.
Because it's a better learning environment.
Yes.
Not because it's more, I mean, it is prettier. You know, I mean, I love our schools, I love all of them, I have, obviously, I've stayed and I volunteer for Oshkosh, I'm always here and I've never moved. But, you know, I embrace all my kids here. But what I'm saying is this is that these environments are better for learning, the views and the natural lighting and the open concepts for, you know, those space areas and the flex areas and kids, and it's just not only appeasing to the eye, but it's also such a good environment for the children to be in, mental health, all of it.
All of, and in addition, we have opportunities, because we hear from our local businesses and saying, you know, we want students, we're not, we don't have enough individuals who have the right skills that are necessary to come out from high school and to gain, you know, we're having to do a lot of training outwards. So now we have opportunities as we go forward, potentially, if we're looking at redesign of our schools or rebuild of our schools, to open up those conversations and partner with some of our local industries and saying, just as we saw, where they have a whole lab, you know, like a fab lab, and it is sponsored by partnership, partnership businesses, and the children, our students get the training and the skills that are necessary, so when they graduate, they're ready. Or they're ready, or they're more ready to be able to go, maybe go to a tech school and get some certifications related to that, if they didn't get it in high school. So there's just so many different opportunities.
So I would put what our teachers do up against any school district in the state.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And in Oaklawn's case, the exterior of the building matches what's occurring on the interior. In a lot of our buildings, let's take Merrill as an example, that is not the case. The amazing things that are happening inside of those walls, you, in most cases, people looking to live and move, and live in a community, might not look or take the time to figure that out. So I think that's partly reality. The other part of it is, we're dealing with a hundred and twenty-year-old building that has, you know, millions of dollars of needs, that would, and even if we went ahead with that, we'd be doing things like tuck pointing roofs and putting in elevators.
Yes.
While that is, that is certainly, tuck pointing is exciting now that I know what it is, it's, it's not something that the building to the naked eye is really gonna look any different than it is today, and you're still gonna be dealing with a hundred and twenty-year-old facility. So therein lies the discussion that the Facility Advisory Committee started having, and the real question in their mind was, where do we start, where do we get on the merry-go-round here? Do we, where in Oshkosh do we begin to address it? And it seemed to make a lot of logical sense to go for Merrill is sort of the beginning moment for this discussion. Number one, we have small, very small middle schools, and the idea of right sizing the district would allow us to provide more student supports, at the same time, we'll have, be able to take advantage of greater efficiencies, at the same time, we'll be able to have facilities that look like what you just saw. So that seemed to be a really nice logical way to begin. Also, as this board has asked numerous times, we wanna see the whole plan. Don't just start with one school, show me how this, how every single school fits into all this. So what I'm gonna share with you next is a detailed pathway, sort of the consolidation plan, it's referred to as Pathway B, because it was, that's what it was designated. And this is a diagram that you've seen before, this is our existing schools with existing enrollment, and you can see we have twenty facilities there, and we've broken it out a little bit on the west side and north side, because we're gonna be focusing Phase One more on the north side. So here is Pathway B and what it would be at the very end of all of the discussions that we're having. And you can see there's a bar across the top that shows Phase Two, Three, One, and Four. And we're gonna focus on Phase One, obviously, because that's where we're gonna start. But in a sense, what would happen in Phase One is we would have a new Merrill Middle School, and mind you, we're not even sure if that's what it would be called, it's just a new middle school on that site, okay? There would be four elementary schools, Oaklawn, Reed, E. Cook, and a new Webster Elementary School, once again, a new school on that site, and then of course, existing North High School. So that would be the area covered by Phase One. So if you, the next slide actually shows that in a little bit more detail, and obviously all of these will be available on the website. And this shows Pathway B, but it shows Phase Two. Now, this is on the west side. In this particular Phase Two, Improving South Park becomes the anchor, just like Improving Merrill becomes the anchor on the north side, Improving South Park becomes the anchor on the west side of the district. So there would be five elementary schools, Oakwood, Trager, Franklin, Jefferson, and Lakeside. There would be two middle schools, Carl Trager and the new South Park Middle School, and then obviously, West High School. So that would take us down to fourteen facilities, that would be about the right size for a district of approximately ten thousand kids, yes?
Can you explain to me why Franklin is split between school, two schools, what does that mean? What is that about?
It's just about how, excuse me, how the boundaries will work out, and again, we, I don't think we've fully vetted out how that would look, but just in terms of right now, the schools do kind of feed in, there was the possibility there that just Franklin by nature of where it was, the fact that it's picking up, I believe, a good chunk of the Roosevelt population, so there might be some split, and we haven't fully figured out how that boundary is going to look.
So with Lakeside too, they would have some going to Trager, because we still have Green Meadow students getting bused all the way to the south, so that's probably...
Most likely that would involve a boundary redraw, I mean, right now, that's something we talked about even before any of this.
Right.
The fact that Green Meadow drives past Trager often and goes to Lakeside.
And switches buses.
Yeah, we probably would clean that up when we do the boundary changes, it'd just make more sense for people.
But it wouldn't stay that way, so those kids, we would redo that boundary, and there would be Trager kids and Lakeside kids. And then Lakeside kids would go to South Park, and Trager kids would go to Trager.
Correct.
But this is different, this is Franklin, these kids going to Franklin Elementary School, and then in fifth grade splitting.
So when we do this, there is gonna be an opportunity to redraw boundaries with each phase, and some of the boundaries will be minor, some of them will be a little bit more severe in terms of having to do the redraw. Remember, this is Phase Two of the project, so this is after Phase One has already been completed. There could be things that would change between Phase One and Phase Two. So there's four phases to the plan, we'll go through all four in just a moment, but everyone is built to stand on its own, and everyone is built to be looked at at the moment we take a look and make adjustments based upon where our population goes. So if all of a sudden, population increases, some of the lines may shift. If the population decreases, the same thing might occur. So each one has its own flexibility built into it. Now, Phase Three and Four is relatively simple, one is the replacement of West High, and the other one is either the remodeling or replacement of North High. So those are pretty cut and dried, but for Phase One and Two, they're meant to be flexible, because even if we, once we're done with Phase One, that's the most accurate at the moment, enrollment patterns could shift in the two years it takes us to construct those facilities.
Right.
And we have options around if enrollment goes up, or down, or stays flat.
Right.
We've taken all of that into account.
And at those times, we can relook at certain things, because I, I'm leery on splitting up a school at fifth grade.
I would recommend, I would strongly recommend you do not draw a boundary until that school is darn near close to completion.
Right, exactly.
Because that, because we wanna pull the most accurate data at that moment.
Okay.
And we learned a lot when we redrew the boundaries for Oaklawn.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Gunla, can you explain a little bit, because under each school name, not only is it listing a projected enrollment, but there's some other language up there that our community may not understand.
Sure, like, some of them talk about safety and security, though that might be some remodeling changes or just some interior door changes. Some of it is addition and renovation, there may be an addition renovation necessary in that plan. Let's see, infrastructure, it just, you know, like Jefferson Elementary School, there may be some infrastructure improvements that need to be made at that site. So there, it just goes through and talks a little bit about, because some sites would be wholesale replaced, like a Merrill Middle School.
Right.
Some of the sites might just be modified.
Okay.
So, let's take a look at Phase One, because that's one that's the most important at this moment, but we wanted to show people that it's part of the bigger whole, and it's part of a coordinated and integrated whole. So in Phase One, we would replace Merrill Middle School with a new school of greater capacity to house Webster Middle and Merrill Middle students, okay? That would be built on the land next to Merrill, that's there right now. So it'd be, they'd be constructed while we're still running school as normal. Then what we would do is we would move the students into the new site. We would use the old Merrill, the Merrill Elementary kids would still stay there, and the Webster Elementary kids would come there. And then what we would do, the plan would be to basically rebuild and replace Webster, the Webster Middle Elementary Complex with a new Webster Elementary School.
And all those kids would go back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, so we'd replace Webster Elementary School with a new school of greater capacity to house Webster, and at this point, Washington. So the Webster kids would go back, yes, we'll talk about the Merrill students in a second. And at this point, it's, we would project that we would close Washington, those students would go to the new Webster facility at that moment. And I'm just gonna call it the Webster facility, what it's eventually called, that's for later day, but it would be that new elementary school facility on the current Webster site. So that would close Washington and Merrill Elementary School. So your next question's gonna be, where's the Merrill Elementary kids go if we're gonna close that down? Well, what we would do is those students would be placed at M. Line, Cook, Reed, Oaklawn, and the new elementary school via boundary change. So we'd have to re-boundary. So somebody may say, hey, wait a minute, why don't we just send all three of them to the new site? Well, if we did that, it would be seven hundred plus, closing in on eight hundred kids, and that would be too big of an elementary school.
Question.
Yeah.
How far away is Washington from Webster? They're pretty close.
Yeah, they're pretty close.
Not more than a couple miles, right?
I don't think so.
It's extraordinary, it's walkable.
I think it's less than a mile.
Yeah, and I'm pointing that out because it's very close, and we're still gonna have neighborhood schools.
You will definitely have neighborhood schools.
Into what makes sense, yes.
If you drove into another community, the neighborhoods are gonna be about the same as their elementary schools. The advantage of this is the fact that we are going to be able to more properly staff our classrooms, we're gonna be able to take advantage of economies of scale to keep class sizes under control, and we're gonna be able to provide additional resources to kids. The one thing that continues to grow is our focus on behavioral and mental health, and how do we deal with students who have those needs. It is, we're gonna be way more effective adding resources for kids along those lines if we have a three-to-four-track school than trying to say, we have a hundred and ninety-one kids sitting at Washington, we have two hundred and some kids sitting over here, how do we split people enough to make that happen? Yes?
What's gonna happen to the AGR when we close down Washington, does it transfer with kids?
It's like you were at Webster this morning, or this afternoon with me, that was their question too, they were like, well, what do we do with AGR? I said, well, first off, Washington is AGR, and so is Webster L.
So they keep?
So that, they would easily be able to keep that.
Good.
I don't know if we can transfer the Washington's AGR contract.
To somebody else.
Yeah, unless, I don't think we could sweet-talk DPI into doing that, but...
If we're consolidating schools together, then they can be AGR.
Okay.
But we can't just say, try to range another school.
Right, so the new larger Webster site school would be AGR.
Good.
Right.
I'd like to comment on number one up there. I have experience working in a larger, it was then a junior high school, we had thirteen hundred students, it was the only middle slash junior high in the community. We did not find that to be too large, we had principal, two assistant principals, four full-time counselors, a full-time police liaison officer, and we pretty much knew the name of every child in the school through what we called care teams. We addressed the needs of students who either moved into the community or had issues in school, and then did follow-up from week to week. So, did we miss some students? We probably did, but we made a concerted effort to make sure that as little of that took place as possible. As I interact with other school board members from across the state through the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, there are a lot of schools throughout the state who have, or school districts who have, middle schools of the sizes we're talking about here. That might be the only middle school they have, because their overall numbers are so much smaller than ours. We're typically the tenth or eleventh or twelfth largest school district in the state, and of the four hundred-plus schools, districts in the state of Wisconsin, three hundred are described as small or rural. So when I interact with other people, they don't find numbers at the middle school level of five hundred to eight hundred to be unusual. That's what their community has supported for years, and it's worked for them.
Right.
And they have great things going on. So I don't think that number alone is necessarily problematic. In fact, I think it's an advantage, because we've had situations in our district where we haven't had enough students sign up for a particular elective, so we've had to eliminate elective, so we've actually reduced opportunities for children, because we can't offer, say, a German class in this school, because only ten kids signed up, fourteen signed up over here, and twenty signed up over here, but that's not sufficient to support a staff member going among and between those schools. So I think the opportunities would be on the rise rather than on the decline.
I would concur, I think if you want to limit the amount of supports we put in place for children, you keep doing what we're doing, because we have so many small sites, it's just gonna be very difficult, if not impossible, for us to do that, given the fact we're running twenty facilities at this moment, and this plan is a way at making them, you know, moderate-sized, there are certainly schools around us that have them much, much larger, and are very effective, as Dr. Herzog points out. So, in a sense, what this would do is this would take us from five schools down to two in one shot, so, because we, and that's explained, so Merrill Middle, Merrill L., Webster Middle, Webster L., and Washington would be turned into a new, larger elementary, a new, larger middle school, and that would be Phase One. So, everybody seems to understand that one, we've had a lot of questions, and a lot of people think this does make sense. They also wanna see what Phase Two looks like. So Phase Two, now mind you, Phase Two is after Phase One is done, it would be sometime down the road, it would most likely require a referendum to do as well, but it would fit with Phase One, and here's why. So we would replace a remodeled South Park Middle with a new school of greater capacity, and we would transfer the Tipler students to either all to South Park or a portion to South Park and a portion to Trager. So Trager and South Park would be the two middle schools on the west side of town. We'd remodel a variety of elementary schools to modernize the learning spaces, similar to the pictures you saw, and handle additional students as needed. And you already saw some of those in terms of the remodeling of different sites to be able to accommodate some more students. We'd repurpose Tipler Middle School and the Shapiro STEM Academy. Now, what those could be repurposed for is still open. For Tipler, it would make a great deal of sense to allow us to move the rec department there. The rec building is probably next on our hit parade of most interesting sites. But it's also something that's probably used up its useful life, you know, as you've heard me say, and people in the community have heard me say, the one thing Oshkosh really does well is we use our facilities a long time, nobody says you guys should use your stuff a lot longer, because we tend to do that a lot. The rec department is an example of those, and that would fit very nicely into the Tipler site. The Shapiro STEM Academy, that's an excellent piece of property and a facility that we could, we could use that for a variety of things, so that would be repurposed potentially. Closure of Roosevelt Elementary School would occur, and Shapiro STEM Academy would close, and Tipler would close as an entity as they exist today, and those students would be placed in the facilities that were listed under Phase Two.
Hey, Dave.
Yes?
Would then the STEM Academy and like ALPS, the programs, would those then just move with the kids?
Uh...
So, that's some of the things that we're working on right now, maybe, maybe not.
Okay.
And that's some of the work that we're doing across the district right now, so for example, some of the equity work that we're talking about right now, you know, what are some of those best practices, and having to serve students of all abilities and levels, and what does that potentially look like? So, to give a solid answer, it's too premature.
Okay.
To give that answer to you, related to, related to the ALPS program, for Shapiro STEM Academy, that, as that entity itself, the entity would close, however, it does not preclude us from looking at programming across the district and how we look at that, and look at potential charters and ways in which we offer. You've heard me in the past actually call those like schools of focus or magnet programs, because at this point, the world becomes so much different than what we are right now, because we have the ability to do so much more and offer our students so much more, because we're not limited, because of the size of the facility, and having to spread personnel out so... and having to spread personnel out so sparsely across the entire district.
You'd also have the ability to modernize those facilities, which will give you a whole different set of opportunities in how you deliver the curriculum. And that could just open up a ton of possibilities that we don't have right now. So that's phase two. Obviously, we can go back to any of these. Phase three would be the renovation or replacement of Oshkosh West. I remember John Lumberger, when we were looking at the window project, actually saying, hey, at what point do we replace West High and stop doing these things? You know, I think at this point, phase three, you would be ready to replace a West High. Some people have asked, well, what about, you know, onsite? What would you do? If you use that existing site, I find it incredible to believe that we would come back and say we would build another California-designed school.
Please.
You know, I probably recommend you not do that here. And that means you would probably go two or three stories up and that means the land that is there for West, all of a sudden becomes much more available. And there's already infrastructure at that site. So I think there's some great opportunities there for phase three. And phase four would be identically the same thing, but that would handle North High. So if people wanna know, what is the plan? That could be the plan. And that is entirely up to you as the board. But it certainly is a viable plan and would right-size the district and at the same time, it would allow us to provide learning experiences for kids that we cannot provide right now. So the last thing we kinda stop with is, can you imagine a time when all of that is done? Can you imagine what our district would look like when all of that is complete? And when people are driving by Oshkosh and they're able to see schools like Clint showed, by the lake, I mean, I gotta tell you, I was standing in a classroom at Webster L. today looking out at the water and I thought, can you imagine the same kind of windows that are at Oaklawn right now that overlook the field overlooking the lake like that? I mean, you know, I'd go back to elementary school there. But just the imagining of the district where as needs pop up, we're able to focus our resources effectively and not spread people all over the place. I think there's some real benefit to this. And I guess at that point, that's kinda what we're asking people to imagine, is this is what the future would be. And it would be built for a long time, that's the other thing. Once these facilities are built, Oshkosh, if history is any indication, are gonna use them for another sixty to a hundred years. You know, so it's not like we're not gonna use these facilities well.
Yeah.
So...
Question.
That's the end of my soapbox, I'll get off now.
It's exciting. I share your enthusiasm, it's fantastic. I had a question about Tipler. Somebody asked me, isn't Tipler in better shape than South Park?
Oh, but it's a lot smaller though.
But it's a lot, it's a lot smaller.
Yeah, and there actually are, is a section of South Park. When we've talked about that project in particular, there's a section, I believe it's the south side, if my direction's right, that is a newer part of the building.
Yes.
So when we talk about, you know, addition, renovation, replacement, I think there would be the ability to save a good chunk of that property, that building and add-on and reuse and then, again, it's almost similar to what we're proposing at Merrill where we, you know, build and then tear down. You know, we'd sort of make it work on that site. I believe the overall site is also, in terms of what the district owns, is a little bit bigger as well. So I think positioning too, again, location, that site, I think, centers on a greater chunk of people versus Tipler obviously being a little further to the west. So it helps bridge the gap to the kids to the east then too.
That was one of the questions that FAC talked about. They kinda started flipping the Tipler versus South Park idea and that's where the site adequacy criteria came in. Where it was, well, how would you make that decision? And that's where we began to look at the different criteria. And the land that South Park has was favorable compared to what Tipler has.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, quite frankly, when we get to that point, you would almost say, well, do we choose a completely new site too? I mean, you might, again, depending on where the population is, maybe something else makes better sense at that time.
My understand, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I think that's important for people to understand that until we start breaking ground, none of this is in stone. As population changes, every one of these phases has the ability to flex. And I think that's important for us because we just don't know what the future necessarily will bring. But we have a lot of flexibility built into all four phases.
And just for clarification also, there's flexibility not only with what schools or what design, that kinda, once we get out of phase one, but also the board has the flexibility as to how you put in your zoning and what that looks like in order to load balance between schools. And that is, and I wanna make sure that people are aware, that that's actually a very normal thing for boards to do. If you look at some of our school districts around us, for example, Appleton, because they would be comparable in size to Oshkosh, they are looking at their zonings very regularly. And, yeah, at least on an annual basis. Whereas I know we have not necessarily, but we haven't had a reason to. And now we're getting to, as we proceed forward and our community supports us with this and we go forward, now we have reason to really start looking at that. So even when we're looking at Merrill Elementary School, old Merrill Elementary School, what does that look like? And we gave a few schools as far as the option is concerned, it's because where do the students live? And what makes sense? Does it make sense to cross over the current boundary of Oaklawn in order to get to E. Cook or to go over to the new potential Webster Element, you know, whatever that, we wanna call that site? So these are things where the board has some, has ability to navigate and to ensure that we do the appropriate load balances. Because as to Dr. Gunlock's credit, as you build a facility, the population shifts. We saw that occur with Oaklawn.
Absolutely.
Of them in there.
And Lakeside, yeah.
So what's on us, on us as, or on you as a board is, as we're seeing that, we have the most recent information, before we solidify, you know, this is who's going where, really take a look at that and make sure it's the right decision for the right children at the right time in doing that. But it will require that there are gonna potentially be some of those boundary changes.
We have to.
But again, it's to get your optimal use so that you can provide the optimal services and supports and educational environment for students. So, Dr. Gunlock.
All right, we actually have changed our boundaries more than once since Oaklawn opened. They've usually been very small changes. I think the one we've talked about was the Lakeside-Green Meadow boundary, starting to look at that because that would be logical to do. But obviously, if we're looking at this, we wanna make sure we're understanding where we're going to be at that point in time. So it's very normal for districts to redraw on a regular basis.
Right, with regard to Tipler, my sister was in the first, I think it was the eighth grade class when Tipler opened. And I recall conversation at the time that the hallways were made, I mean, it was all up to code, but they were specially designed narrower, the ceilings were shorter, and the stairwells were pitched differently to preserve space. And so in talking with principals at Tipler over time, they've expressed some concerns about the stairwells because of, because of the way they're pitched.
Yes.
And students falling or tripping and that sort of thing. So I don't know that that same issue exists at South Park, but I know that that was the conversation about Tipler when my sister was a student there, going back to when she was a student. She's not a student there now. I made that perfectly clear.
So...
I do wanna commend administration and the Facilities Advisory Committee because in my history in the district, I don't recall a time when there's been a long-range plan of this magnitude to look at facilities in the district. And I'm not faulting anyone, I'm just saying that's how it's been. But I think there've been members of this board in more recent years who have encouraged the board to imagine or imagine here or to look at ways to move forward and be more forward-thinking about planning for the future. And I believe we have the administration in place to do that and we also have the wisdom of the Facilities Advisory Committee, which was a fairly diverse group to assist with that. So I just wanna thank all of you for the endless hours and Clint with Gray and Associates who have done so much to get us to this point today. So thank you all.
One more comment?
Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say thank you again and echo what Kelly said about high schools in different areas. Clint, did you guys do River Falls by chance?
We did not, no.
Okay, well, I was recently, I'm a wrestler and a basketball player, so I spent all weekend in gyms and I was at River Falls last week and they have a beautiful facility. It looks like the ones you showed us with the flexible spaces. And if you're gonna spend eight hours at a wrestling match, it's really nice to have that space as opposed to, our high school, we don't have anything like that. We don't even have a gym that we can host a wrestling tournament or a basketball tournament because it's not big enough, right? So this is exactly what I've been looking for, some sort of plan that will get us to align our facilities with what is out there because we are definitely in need of some new building. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I think this is a fantastic approach.
The last thing I would say is, this isn't just about building new facilities. Remember, there's a hundred and sixteen million dollars in need of our old facilities that would largely go away if we started modernizing and replacing them along this path. So that's the other thing that I think it's important for people to understand, is there is no way out of this spending nothing.
Right.
You know, we have to either maintain existing or we have to replace and remodel some existing. It certainly seems like this is the right time to do the latter. And given the economic outlook, breakfast, there was some fascinating information that the Chamber of Commerce shared, that the economy of Wisconsin is very strong. It's projected to be very strong nationally in Wisconsin for the next ten years. So, you know, when people always say, when is the right time economically? It is a very favorable time. That is not always the case when districts have to do these sorts of things, so...
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I have a little...
Go ahead, don't, you go first.
I have one comment on slide five, the building cost benefit analysis study. Up on the top, this is 2017. Can you, before this goes, or can we edit it? If this is on the, if on, you know, on our website and people can go see this? Can we put someplace that these are updated numbers? Because everybody that looks at this would think this is 2017 and you said that the dollar amounts and the student enrollment are updated.
Right.
So can we, I don't know, can we put 2017 but then put some kind of like, updated in 2020? You know, not completely updated, but some kind of updated, you know? Just because if I was to look at this and I think of inflation, I think of everything else, well, I'm gonna add a bunch of money to this.
I think it's important to note also what it includes versus what it does not include.
Yeah, it's got there, yeah.
So Clint, can you speak towards what those numbers include and what they do not include? Because we had, we had a lot of internal discussion about this as well.
Yeah, and we did have a bit of that. So again, we had a little bit bigger document which had a little bit more information on it and there was a couple notes down at the bottom. Again, this is just really fixing what you have. This isn't making spaces bigger, this isn't creating collaboration spaces, this isn't adding classrooms, this is purely fixing, you know, pipes in the wall and updating flooring and those types of things. As well as, again, within the numbers here, there was some work for the safety secure vestibules and entry conditions to be created.
That's in these numbers?
Yes. So yeah, we did also, we kind of included this one because it's a little bit, it's very clear, it's very legible, it's the easy information. But we also do have that updated document as well, the numbers align to that, the enrollments are updated, and then we do have kind of the, a little bit of the language of this is this, it is not this.
Can we throw that one slide in there and write it after this one maybe? So that it's all, you know, some people can actually see and have the right information. Like this is included, this is not. This is where we're at, this is enrollment.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
And just for highlighting purposes, by replacing the five schools that we're discussing, that takes twenty-four point seven million dollars right off the top.
So we can put that on there too? You know, the more information, because this is, people aren't gonna watch this as much, they're just gonna go to our website and read through this. So the more information, I mean, this is high level because you're here to explain it to us, but for them, just have little things like that, like if, you know...
And we'll do it in, typically in the past, we've done it by modifying some slides, which I think your suggestion is great, I think we should do that. But also, we end up throwing that into some frequently asked questions. We actually ask that question.
Okay.
You know, what is included and isn't included in here? And why wouldn't we spend that money? And, you know, you go ahead and answer some of those suggestions, but I think Dr. Cartwright's point is the real salient one, the fact that there's twenty-four million dollars that comes off the books if we replace, if we go from those five facilities to two new ones.
Yep.
Right off the top.
Can you get a new...
So in a sense, you fund the elementary school. Completely, just by what you don't have to do.
That's a good talking point.
Write that down.
Right, I am, right, I did, I am. I'm like, that is a great talking point.
I have another question.
This is Selagia, thank you, my goodness.
Yeah, so I was just gonna point out that obviously this will cost the community, right? We talked about the referendum, I think the survey said it was about a hundred dollars a year on a hundred thousand dollar home. But I wanna point out that it also will get us money back because like Ms. Carlin was saying, going to those communities where they're able to host big tournaments, those things you have to eat while you're there, some people stay the night, you know, they go Friday, Saturday night.
Everybody stays the night.
I don't know, I only have elementary kids, so I'll get there. So it boosts the whole community.
It's a very good point.
So we'll get money back as well. And something Dr. Gunlock said is it'll attract people to live here too. So I think when we talk to people about the cost, because I'll admit that a hundred dollars is, feels like a hefty price tag when you're living paycheck to paycheck, but when you think about the boost, it'll be for the whole community, for the jobs, for the people living here. It's just gonna, it's gonna pay back. The other thing I wanted to talk about a little bit was those elementary school pitchers. Seeing the kids reading in the little like cubby spaces just melted my heart. Because with small children...
Did you imagine their faces walking in?
Right. Despite having these big couches and, you know, beanbag chairs, the things we have at my home, sometimes my children's favorite place to sit and read a book is the laundry basket. Like that, right? Like that's...
And they're so cheap.
I know.
We could buy a lot of laundry baskets. They're not higher code. Oh darling, you can't put kids in laundry baskets.
But the last few years, the last two years, I guess I should say, my two elementary students there are, so this year, they're first and third graders, their teachers have used flexible classroom seating. And I will admit, I was skeptical of that at first, like, because I taught middle schoolers and it's hard to maintain kids, so you're gonna let these elementary kids have flexible seating? Like that was sketchy to me. But it's so successful. And so when I see those elementary school classrooms that are actually designed to allow that, it's really exciting to me, someone who was a skeptic. Because what my kids' teachers are doing now is they're making flexible seating in a classroom that was built in nineteen fifty that was designed for rows of desks. And they're changing that and making it flexible seating. I just think it would be wonderful to give our teachers buildings that are designed for the way kids learn now and the way that we should be teaching them now.
Well, we talked, just to speak on that a little bit, so we talked a little bit, we talked about the playground equipment, how that sort of seems to be an oversight. For a long time, furniture was also kind of the oversight. So you'd get to the end of the project and if there was money left over, you would maybe have enough to do a couple classrooms and, you know, you wouldn't... And we've, we've just learned as we've designed these spaces how critically important the furniture is to making the school and the spaces successful. So we really go out of our way to make sure that that budget is in the project, it doesn't get touched by the construction and that way at the end of the project. And so, you know, similarly, maybe there should be a point four on that slide that these will be, you know, fully furnished as well, you know? Again, that's really important to making them function correctly.
The other thing I think it's important to remember in terms of the taxpayer impact is that right around the turn of the last century, there were citizens in Oshkosh who paid money out of their paycheck to build Merrill Middle School. And those people who paid that money back then, I'm sure it was just as steep for them to pay that at that time. And what an amazing story if they knew we'd still be using that building one hundred and twenty years later and having a conversation of how do we, how do we take that legacy for another chunk of time? Probably, I wouldn't recommend a hundred and twenty years, but how do we, how do we take that legacy and extend it? Because there were people who came before us who are not here anymore, who paid a lot of money in their dollars, out of their discretionary dollars, to put the twenty buildings that we currently have in place. And I think most of them are probably not here, but they can rest easy knowing we've used every ounce of those facilities.
And then some.
And I just was noticing in nineteen fifty decades, we built, or the citizens of Oshkosh built five schools in the fifties.
The Wisconsin Association of School Boards will be celebrating its one-hundredth anniversary next year. And they've asked districts from throughout the state to supply them with pictures of old, what they call old schools. When I told them we are using small schools in this district, it brought the conversation to a halt. But what I should have added was, we have many people to thank for the condition of our buildings, which we are still using. And which are not only safe, but are excellent learning environments. But the message was that many school districts do not have schools of this age.
I mean, we've talked about that they're better learning in my rooms when they're larger schools, but it's also a cost efficiency too. I mean, having all of those small schools is just not cost-effective.
Yeah.
I mean, so when you consolidate the schools, you're also gonna save some costs. Now, the district at that time can decide to reallocate those resources to improve the schools you have. But you, you are going to get some efficiencies, because you are not running twenty schools. Simple things like garbage collection, you know, or utilities. And there's a whole laundry list of things you'll save by not having to do that at all, those different.
Right. And then when we talk about the benefits of consolidation, is it fair to say that, you know, if we, with these middle schools, for example, my daughter wanted to take French and they don't offer it at South Park? Probably because there aren't enough kids that are interested in it or?
No, that's definitely the reason.
Okay. And so would it be fair to say that we could maybe bring back some languages to our middle schools when we consolidate? And that would be a big benefit.
That is, that is one of the, the actual benefits. So when Dr. Harazak was saying that there's ten kids here, ten kids there. So for example, there's ten students maybe over at Webster Middle School that's interested in some foreign language.
Right.
And same, then there's ten other students maybe over at Merrill Middle that have an interest in that same language. Currently, we will not offer that language, because there's not enough students to justify a teacher or a physician in order to provide those services. Combined together, now you're getting to that threshold of, maybe we should offer a section, if we can find a teacher bilingual, maybe speaks multiple languages, to be able to teach that one language. So ideally, you would want to, that's just an example, but it happens in so many other fields as well. You, you, when you're looking at your arts programs, when you're taking a look at your world language programs, when you're looking at your technology, your, your tech programs, it impacts so many areas of opportunity for, for our children.
And that's why I asked, because I think when we talk about this plan and consolidation, that there are so many benefits that we need to make sure that we communicate to our parents and students and teachers. It's gonna, it's a great thing for us. We can offer more programs, we can save money. So, you know, I just challenge all of us to talk about, this is gonna be a fantastic thing and share Dave's enthusiasm, so.
Share the pictures too.
And share the pictures.
We're gonna have lots of pictures.
As I said, those pictures are very compelling. I think that that's, that is an easy avenue to make people look at it differently too. You know, that if you show those pictures that this is what we could have, like, that's not like, this is a dream, like, some of this could happen. No, those are real schools. I mean, that just blows my mind.
In Wisconsin, like you said, like those schools. And districts around us, like North Monmouth, right?
Yeah.
I've heard from our high school.
Yeah.
I don't know if you'd like to weigh in on this, or if you're still in awe of everything you've seen tonight. But I'd like to give you an opportunity to share if you so desire.
I liked the pictures a lot. Those were very interesting. Traveling to different high schools and like other schools for sports events and all of that, I can say, like, we definitely are on the lower end of high schools. And like, not saying that our learning or anything is.
Right, it's the facility.
Yeah, the facility is what is holding us back, I guess you can say. But the learning is just so amazing at all of our schools. And for people to come here and maybe be turned away by like what the image of our district is, then it's kind of sad, because we have so much to offer.
Yes.
Thank you for sharing.
Very awesome.
I just think that like the pictures could be very persuading. And to those families who might be hesitant to kind of be in favor of this idea. But yeah, I think it could, it's just kind of surprising to me that like schools in Wisconsin look like that. And like, knowing that it's a pretty close district, like, I never knew that. So I think that'd be so cool, just like, like in a couple more years, I could see that that's possibly Oshkosh. I just think that'd be so amazing.
Thank you. It's good, it's always good to hear your voices and your weighing in on these things. Are there any other comments or questions at this time?
Awesome.
Well, I thank you for being here tonight and all of you contributing to this presentation. And we'll look forward to this coming back, I believe in two weeks, if that's written.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. All right, our next agenda item is a request for future agenda items. Does anyone have any items they'd like to see on an upcoming agenda? Are there any announcements? Don't forget the spaghetti dinner tomorrow night at North High, five to seven. And the North musical performance at the Grand, February thirteenth through sixteenth. And if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, that might be a good idea. Any other announcements? All right, we will adjourn then to executive session. One, considering the disciplinary data of specific persons under section nineteen point eighty-five, parent one, parent F of Wisconsin statutes. A, review expulsion recommendation from an expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engaged in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority, which endangered the property, health, or safety of others and endangered the property, health, or safety of any employee or school board member of the school district in which the pupil is enrolled under a section one twenty point one-three, parent one, parent C, parent E of Wisconsin statutes. D, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E. A, Oshkosh Education Association, OEA, negotiation strategies. B, Oshkosh Paraprofessional Employee Association, OPEA, negotiation strategies. C, Nonteaching Employee Association, NTEA, negotiation strategies. And D, purchase of property.
So move.
Second. Please call the roll.
Carlin.
Aye.
Carlin, aye, Evans.
Aye.
Evans, aye, Garner.
Aye.
Garner, aye, Harazak.
Aye.
Harazak, aye, listed.
Aye.
Also, I, Michelle.
Salagia.
Aye.
Salagia, aye, motion carried.
This meeting is adjourned.